I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation under God, indivisible, liberated and sovereign.
I'll make that motion up tonight's agenda.
I'll second that.
Your recommendation, second on paper. I, oh, so carried. The amendment approval of minutes of 615, 2021, there is a chance to read them in leations, corrections?
I'll make a amendment approval of minutes of 615, 2021, there is an awful name.
Second. Your recommendation, second on paper. I, oh, so carried. Review of common balances, this is a letter to indicate, or review this claim to do with the public. We get any issues, we normally give it's a table at motion table.
Not twice.
No? Or how much? This is kind of real, yeah. Sorry, my mother. I'll make your recommendation to accept those.
Second.
Your recommendation, second on paper. I, oh, so carried. Review that they found balances, international states for Canada, two months, two thirty-eight, twenty-one. Motion table? I'll second that one. Your motion, second on paper. I, oh, so carried. Review the ordinance 126, 881, parking, city grid here, and run through all the old ordinances, and end up finding something that's accurate. Uh... I say we give us a chance, let me make a motion, or a recommendation, approve this amendment. Hard to get, made a motion that we can table the ordinance until we agree to prove, and then come back with a high ticket. Yeah, it's, uh, we're going to end up finding, it's only makes sense, it's not needed, I guess, and they, so, hopefully we review some, and if we get the next council meeting, we did ask for recommendations to amend it, or update it, and, uh, just, uh, pretty much, uh, basically, we're going to come into, uh, some of your century, I guess. Your recommendation, second?
Second.
On paper.
I.
I, oh, so carried. So, please, uh, we, uh, we have to ask, like, please, so, the first discussion on the credit board. I'll say, uh, if you're going to attempt to approve that, the, uh, federal report on the city of Fort Francis, and, uh, they have a good discussion of this, uh, international bridge, uh, in the case of sale, and, uh, their fears are that if the private end buys that, and then the poles, be, uh, be able to control the promise of the bridge, and, um, there's a fear of safety, there's some danger of safety concerns, who will be watching the bridge? And they're looking for their government, and they're thinking of, you guys, take over the bridge, and be toll-free, in a, in a nutshell, and, uh, maybe, why, and the other factors. Something more to support for our council is, uh, he does have a good idea. Personally, the bridge hasn't been for sale, from what I understand, but part of it has its own, its own, uh, controls, meaning, uh, the security of the bridge, and that, and, uh, and so it's on its way to happening, and I think, I think the toll-free bridge process is, certainly would help, obviously, the government, we will, we should, we, we understand it's, uh, the, uh, private bridge, that's how we consider that, with, uh, safety requirements, and that, the, uh, that, uh, is a major concern, you know, from the Canadians, that , uh, they're moving that, or, uh, so, anyway, yes, that's the thing in a nutshell, uh, I feel, if you guys have a chance to read it, uh, especially, it's pretty offensive.
Well, the people that owned the bridge prior to sale, they made enough money off, uh, fares, people going across, to pay to repair that bridge, a couple times over. But now they didn't, no, they just backed out, resold, they backed out, took the money.
Was it less than one hundred?
Uh, it's, uh, it's resold.
Yeah, resold.
On a Canadian side.
For a little, we have, uh, we have raised the fares, so it performed in a certain means, and now that the fares have been collected, over the last year, for the additional fares, the knowledge for sale, and there's no scandal, repairs apparently for this bridge, anywhere to buy, and soon that will, uh, appear, so, uh, again, that's, that's the major concern, who's prepared to be done, that's offered to be done.
You know, wow, is they, I thought PCA, okay, I had.
When residents want to sell their, uh...
Part?
When residents want to sell their, uh, I had, that PCA already sold, but it might not have been, um...
Believed.
They might not have went for the red, so they might not have the big flag, or...
Didn't he sell, it's like a Canadian, a first nation?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they're doing, apparently, the American side of the bridge, apparently, that, which, apparently, residents have, it's under control, you can't be, you know, the rare, uh...
Yeah, they're, uh...
Which is under, um, PCA. So, mainly, uh, it, it's really all, but, long story short, is, half the, basically, uh, information is provided, I have a good chance to check that, but I don't think it can be any false information, when it comes to the, uh, so I'm sure they've done their, this is on a, half, half of this, uh, uh, first nations identity, they believe it's a first nation identity, that's in purpose, like, the back door, and the toll is on the American side, it does not fall under the Canadian toll act, that's why the toll is put on the American side, is what they believe. Again, this is information that's supplied to us by the, uh, the idea of a toll-free bridge, uh, and under the government, for, uh, the Canadian, I mean, certainly, I, I don't, so, I think, probably, you may go, uh, uh, you, you know, they, they have funds available, uh, which is huge by every indication, so, have paid for and controlled by people of the, the United States of Canada, I think is only a fair, fair assumption. There's only, from what I can, only one other toll-free bridge crossing Canada that is, again, from information, that is a toll-free backdoor bridge, so, um, I think the city of Fort Francis, they, they, they look at this, uh, and, 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 I can agree with the arguments they're making, and that's my opinion, um, so, but, again, open to discussion.
Okay, I have a question, and, uh...
My question, go ahead.
Okay, so, here's the Canadian side of the bridge. Okay, so, there's the bridge on the Canadian side, right? Now, I go to the bridge.
We're talking about the bridge.
Oh, okay, so, I want to, but I still have a question. But I still have a question. We're talking about all this EAS stuff coming up, and I'm answering all that, how does that affect the shoreline that I own with, with Sam?
You're on the wrong bridge.
Mine, okay.
We're talking about the bridge.
Okay.
Car, you can call the one for the car.
Oh, okay, just, I was just wondering, sorry, are you okay?
Okay, well, anyway, um, I, I think it's something, think about it hard and long, it is a resolution, uh, after, for, redo it again, and, uh, I think, uh, next council meeting, or something, we should either, uh, either go for it, or, 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 either support it, or disengage, or, 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 that's all, I think, you know, the, yeah, please, take her, you know, hand me, sure. Sure, please. All right, please, now, again, to, uh...
I want, I want, I want your motion to be able, hold on.
I'll second that one. We're voting, and second on paper. I, oh, so carried, thank you. Um, well, the, uh, okay.
I think business is going great right now. I think people are happy to be out again, and you can definitely tell with the border closed, we get a lot of tourists that can't cross, this is the furthest place they can get.
Any idea why the gross profits are going down this month?
Yeah, we had, um, we ordered the tent, and then our central air unit's been acting up in this hot weather, so we've had some repairs done on that, and we had another repair, I just can't recall off my head what it was, but now we gotta deal with our ice machine, it's having a hard time trying to keep up too right now, so...
The hot weather, is that...
Oh, yeah. But, yeah, there's a few maintenance issues, but they've been taken care of, so...
I mean, you still made a profit, you said, down.
I know, it, it looks bad.
The overall year is still really good, it's eight, beat 2019.
Yeah, by like five grand, I believe, so...
I was just wondering how, all of a sudden, what they, knew their habit and everything. All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I was, you know, again, most of our office, moving the change, we're still exceeding, uh, 2019, like, so, it's, um, deep, but now, it's, uh, that, that's a great, that's a great, uh, the idea of having, um, this, um, three-year comparison is, I'm, I see where you are. Uh, any standard for the, uh, probably, uh...
Yeah, this weekend, we're having our annual barbecue cook-off, so, that should be good, I think we have eleven people signed up as of today, so...
Oh, is that all eleven people?
Eleven people are signed up for the, uh, barbecue cook-off.
Oh.
Yeah.
And, and, when they cook, or are they cooking anything they want?
Anything they want.
And then do they zap all that?
Yep.
They put out chapels, and then people vote on which one tastes the best? What's private, or is it private?
Uh, we were able to collect four twins tickets, we've got a Jägermeister machine, we've got a bunch of smaller prizes after that, but it's, it's a good show, it, it'll be fun.
Pretty, yes.
Anyone else want to sign up, there's still time.
They cook everything as we cook, or...
Yeah.
So they have to put in a barbecue for us, and, uh, has a...
I'll give the recipe, but I saw, uh, the people, so...
What time to start, is it all, or just adding?
Whatever time, like, some people are gonna cook a brisket, so they'll, they're gonna be there at like six in the morning, you know, other people are gonna come in late with hot dogs, just for fun, you know, but the judging will take place at six o'clock, so...
Sorry, you looking for donations, or...
Uh, potluck donations, the gold for me, for sure, I want, oh, that sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, actually, I'm looking for one more, if anyone on the council wants to join in. Are you?
Mm-hmm. Do you wanna, wanna judge too?
On Saturday, I think I'll, for, uh...
Okay.
Look, we have three more judges.
Yeah.
Do you do your shadows?
Of course you do, you're judging. Wear your buffet pants, I promise, you won't be disappointed.
Who's on our, who's, uh, who'd be there, and that, and this, for the, uh, so... Uh, any other, can I say, do you have, kind of, his hot dogs, or his, probably, or any other?
Well, Nick and I have been working on the ice machine, but, um, if it doesn't pick up by the end of this week, I think we're gonna have to call in somebody to see what they can do, so there'll probably be another repair, but I can't help it, it's just, it's so hot.
Yes. Haven't, I got a couple of them. Four, five years ago, uh, four years ago, five years, uh, probably 2016? Yeah, I remember, yeah. You, 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 I'll second that, then, we'll, in a second, on paper. I, oh, so carried, thank you, Cam.
Thanks.
Yeah, the, uh, I remember this, uh, understanding, local 99 workers, United, to collect the bargaining agreement, um, they've had a chance to do that? Yeah, the, uh, Janet, or, uh, Janet, Cheryl, and myself, and, uh, the union representative, and we negotiated all the contract, so now I think we got, sure hope we got to approve it, so that's, I just gotta make a, uh, recommendation to approve it, maybe you want to look over the changes, or the red, or the pink, you know, I, I, it, it turned out that, uh, you know, they asked for the one, and we, 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 so, I think they include it, or, yeah, I think, yeah, I would agree, and, so, I guess I would make a recommendation that we accept the, number, animal, and, and, local 99 workers, United, to collect the bargaining agreement?
Seven.
Your recommendation?
Say god. And who are, the 99, who are, they come out of Chicago? Oh, but I mean, look at, which ones?
They're usually for the, for the liquor store.
Oh.
Yeah.
You have a recommendation, in a second, on paper? I, oh, so carried, thanks for the negotiation, and, uh, that, I just, um... And then, uh, yeah. They were, they were, they were, they were, you know, you have, uh, other thing, I just...
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's been going good, really busy, mowing grass, ditches, we kinda stopped mowing here for the last four or five days, 'cause the weather's been so hot.
Okay.
Really good.
I see the ditches are dry, you did, uh, the ditches, and, uh, I noticed, did you able to, uh, leak your, or...
Yep.
Yeah, I, I seen, I thought that, but it wasn't, I'm not sure, maybe, uh, south side of, uh...
Yeah, we hit the ones with the most concentrated cattails.
I'm curious, how many of the residents mowed your own ditches, do you ever keep track of that, I don't think you, or...
There's more on the north side than the south.
Yeah.
Beduque does about half theirs, couple on, uh, towards Second Bridge, south side, there's not very many, maybe one or two.
Well, they were almost lost.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it wasn't, if you can see that, uh, they were, again, approved, uh, thought, I think, you know, when they were mowing the ditches, that's great, and, uh, they were taking care of, uh, the, the, the job, and, so...
I have to say, the, uh, the, uh, fantastic, just, great job.
Yes, thank you.
The Red Cup, thanks, you make a buddy of building, a lot of times, work down there with sand, and climbing laws, and a big hit, the best of those, we got more to do, but they done a lot, so thank you, guys.
So, I see you got the sand replaced in the oxus, and that, and, oh, that's, uh, Ken, uh, I see that equipment moved from the, the exercise, the, the adult exercise, equipment moved from the, uh, park, what's the disposition, is it stored somewhere?
Yeah, we have it stored at our storage area.
The, the council, again, the disposition of the, the, uh, give the salvation army thoughts?
I had talked to the Bronco Arena, if they would possibly want to take it and put it inside for their dryland training for the kids.
That's a good idea.
And they were gonna talk about doing that for, and then parents can use it during hockey games, and...
So, we've got a, uh, so...
Yeah, and there's a lot of parents that walk around that rink during hockey games and practices, steady, so...
That's a great idea, uh, I don't think it has to be the home, if somebody else has got some, but I, I didn't, I didn't like that arena, I mean, uh, that situation, it was gonna change, I heard, but, um, why don't we do that, and then we get the, the feeling again, if, you know, it's a great idea, if, yeah, but, the kind you think is best, like, this is like, uh, could be, uh...
Yep.
If they want, if, if, they want, uh, the arena, and, uh, we just don't need, uh... Is that, is that the school district, or...
ISD 361, yep.
You may have to talk to Kevin, over, like, that, and, uh, you, you, uh, you, you know, maybe talk to that, so, we talked to all places, yeah, they want, oh, yeah, I agree, I mean, Kevin's been more careful, uh, since, uh, the, uh, so, I think we've all, with that, and, uh, we've all, good, our idea, but, if you're sort of, uh, it's gonna come, so, it's, uh, make, uh, make that decision, uh, and, we, you know, just, hang around, or...
Yeah, yep, exactly.
Um, yeah, uh, you want, even the water breaks?
No water breaks, water's been quiet.
Water, uh...
If, if there is a break, we'll know where it's at right away.
Um, I do know the city, the International Falls, installed their, um, sanitary sewers, and from what I have seen, they have, there's a, uh, disconnection of people's sewer lines that are running, sanitary lines, they're not sanitary lines, but, there, um, some that are running into the sanitary, she, John, you, or this, uh, can, can, is there any...
They're, they're gonna be required to, uh, to disconnect a hundred of those per year that are hooked up illegally into the sanitary system, and, uh, and a hundred, that's almost, that's almost nothing compared to how many, you know, all those old homes, uh, are hooked up illegally, and, uh, I mean, it's, it's a tough thing for people that don't have much money either, to get in there, and, so, I, I think they, they're gonna require a bigger program, maybe a longer program, something like that, but...
What that, again, is repercussion from when we had that, uh, super steeple, or whatever you call it, back, NPCA, and, you know, all, and, and getting ready, of course, the whole flux system, and, you know, and it costs us, it would cost us $35,000 or something to just check our sewer, which is actually funny, but, but, again, um, that was one good thing, when you rent water meters, you grow water meters, but if you were, reading water meters, it'd come inside, and you'd also have a chance to look at people's subsystems and...
Our, our sewers are, are quite a bit newer, and in, in a lot better shape than international?
Yeah, I, I realize that, we don't have a year of problem, International Falls has, but, again, that much, you know, you're alert, and, because it is an issue, and I think it's more, uh, separate to sewer, uh, the, the rainwater, the store water from the sanitary system, and, uh, the sanitary system, so, uh, you, we, uh, most of our water meters, uh, now, or, we still have some, uh, here, uh...
They're almost all remote outside the building.
Yeah, I, I know, it's, uh, here, well, if you know of any, or, again, that's something that you gotta be aware of, uh, you know, it's, 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 uh, different, uh, just looking at the, through, uh, certain, may have, or can tell you that there's probably more houses hooked up, or, uh, may have, with certain conditions taking on rainwater issues, so, uh, if you notice anything, but that, it's just a diligent thing that you have to be aware of, and that's what we, that's what we, uh, that we, uh, in a hundred year, uh, we're, 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 so... Okay, did, did, did Rockford, John, you, again, this is a sewer district, and Rockford owners, they, they, uh, themselves, if they're, if they order the city...
If I order the city, I don't know what their plans are, they haven't really shared them.
They're, 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 it's what happened, if it falls on the city, or falls on the residents, uh, it's a little bit of a, uh, so, if you see it, it's, uh...
Duluth, Duluth granted $5,000 loans to do this, up to $5,000.
To re, reconstruct, uh, some, you know, okay.
We got, we got Minnesota Real Water coming to town tonight, some of the guys are coming, so they'll be around, busy tomorrow, doing leak detection.
You move water, you say, and what do they just, what do you do?
Hooked a bunch of roads down 20, and we're gonna see if we can find any leaks down any of them roads.
Oh, they got their, uh, shit, or...
Yeah, they got their, they hooked all the hydrants, and they can hear, hear it, and the pulsations, and, and we're gonna, we're gonna fix a couple hydrants, too.
Pressure water, can't afford, uh, a bunch of, you know, litigation, whatever, you are, so, okay, um...
Can I ask a question, since we have been up there? Um, as you know, I appreciate you guys, right, you've noticed that I have three breakers, big dogs now, one's 200 pounds, in my pool, um, I'm just trying to figure out, when you guys come, so I can get the dogs in, because they're becoming protective?
We can, we can move the reader to, to the other side of the building, where we don't have to go in through the kennel.
I think it's worrying, it's, I mean, I have one, one fifty, one two hundred, seven three hundred, I have...
Yeah, you, you wanna, you can call Cheryl and set up an appointment, we can come over and move the reader to the outside of the building, so then we don't have to go through the kennel.
I just wanna be sure, no, because, and I have to contact the other people, too, because they're in the water, they are, I mean, I can't keep my dog, I don't know when they're coming, so, that's all, all, come on.
Okay.
Don't want to be, uh, uh, be afraid.
Okay, um, any other, for, uh, you see the grueling, uh, uh, construction, uh, with the verbal, and, how many projects are complete, um, the signage is done, I, I don't see much, um, do have any care of, so... Good, you're awesome, thank you, David.
Thanks.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, can you, uh, uh...
Just microphone, too? Well, a couple, I guess it was two or three weeks ago, um, the city put in two floating docks at the Duluth Street Dock, um, and the one on the south side, we feel that is a possible safety hazard to people swimming at our beach, and, and there was some conversation that that, um, dock on the south side could be moved to the north side, now, however, today, we see that, or yesterday, um, another dock was put in on the north side, making two over there, and I, I don't know if there's any room to put the, the, the one on the south side, now, we had discussions that, I mean, you, you know, my wife talked to you, I talked to you, and, uh, you thought that there was a possibility that we may, um, get that out of there, and so I'm requesting that, um, we move that, move that dock, because of, for safety reasons of the little kids swimming at the beach, I mean, I noticed that, uh, City Beach, they've got, um, they allow no boats, you know, they, they have that all barricaded off, so that, and so, I, I'm just saying that, um, this is a special circumstance, and we, you know, we're, we're worried for the little kids that are swimming here.
Circumstance, saying, you, 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 you see the, um, south side dock, move, if you, move to the north side?
Well, or move someplace, I mean, we, we thought that's Bruce Street, at the end it's Bruce Street.
That's another, okay, uh, okay.
It's, it's not, no.
So, your question is to try and relocate, relocate the south side dock, now, Nick, you installed, and recently, now, insert room on the south side, I know originally there was three docks on the south side, or, on the north side, uh, obviously, there were a lot, there were docks, and, you know, where you, you hoped about, and it has something to do with it, but, so, explain, uh, what were, uh, you were...
He was there, the first day we went over, measured the ten, and we measured, see, they called the other...
He was there the first day we went over and measured the ten and we measured the seat, they call the other one side and they can't, all three cannot be on one side. He went there with a ruler and measured the end, he wouldn't say. That, that's the question, that was a simple question. Right on with the docks we purchased, they don't appear to be room on the north side for three docks. Has anybody considered a possibility of another dock in other location, you know, whether the appeared on the industry or anything else, is there a possibility just other location?
You're not gonna put on that ear down there because the loading dock, you can really get a boat between them too. Side, here's one dock that feeds her kids from the same.
Kids swimming in front of my place too and dogs swimming in front of my place.
There are kids on the street.
Dogs, you know, but you don't live there.
Wait, 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 wait.
And I ask.
Cheryl, Cheryl, Cheryl. Everybody can gather and say.
I know, but they don't live there.
Cheryl, Cheryl, listen, we can raise your hand, I'll let you say.
I don't want to raise my hand, you don't acknowledge me. I have to sit right out.
Cheryl, you've dropped three times since I've been here today. Anyway, I'm saying it's not my pocket money, we'll all get to say something, we're prepared for it. Okay.
Well, I have a question. Now those docks, those floating docks are about what, they're about eight feet, nine, ten feet? Why aren't they docked at the very end of the dock? Why aren't they at the very end of that dock? And then there could be three of them, just like there were all those fingers before, there would be, however, if you put one in eight or nine or ten feet and then you have another one, you're never gonna be able to get three.
Even with three docks on the, on the north side, the way the strikers are running down, you will not fit boats in between the docks with the twenty, twenty foot scenario.
If they went out to the end?
At the very end of the dock, we measured it four different times and put them there.
Well, why don't you put them up there to start out with?
My dock, my dock. Okay, so, so what I'm hearing is, I've heard you, they're not attached to the very end, they are moved in, six, eight feet in where, where that distance, they're still, if they would have been attached, then they're still not. But is there a possibility, is there some other possible place that we can look at to take that third dock? Saying we could go down there. It doesn't hurt to go down. Look at it, I guess, you know, so. Let's see if we can get this resolved.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think that's a proper comment that was made, that kids are only down there three, four times a month, that's not true. And that's, you know, the safety is, is a lot more important and I'll tell you what, I've been, I'm right there and I don't do much except for watch the birds and watch the dock now. And we counted and we figured there was an average of one boat per day.
Every other.
On all the docks put together down there. A one boat, less than one boat per day. On Sunday, I think there was three in there throughout the day.
And this, these, most of our boat trap, or I do anticipate if they ever opened the bridge, is where a lot of our boat trap will come from. Again, I can't.
Well.
Is it possible for one of those docks to somehow work at the main street park that you've been working on? Or is it because of the way the rocks started, it would be impossible to even dock there? It just, I'm just following, I don't know, I, it's just a thought.
Have to look down there and see that, that rock was not so far there, I don't know. Just have to look here.
It's an option. Well, I think we can, we can ignore that option, I have a little wish for it, but we, I gotta see the docks, I see the docks. I know when to look at one, I did look at one three days ago or two. And so the docks, so the regular docks, I think they're ready, ready to the dock, I understand they're concerned they're due. And we have the dock, if there is another place that they can.
We, excuse me.
Ignore that option.
Yeah, we, we talked to the DNR many times and the DNR said, well, okay, that's not illegal, but it is not neighborly. They've been through these hassles, these squabbles.
See, now Wilbur, that was unnecessary, that was totally.
You sit here and you give all your BSs all the time, you're not worried about anybody else in the city. We've had, I've had so many comments and likes and everything, good job, it's about time to have that dock fixed up so people can use it. And there really are the only two that I hear that are sometimes.
And don't point at me, don't point at me.
And play them off.
And yes, we do. And I think, but he comes here, he throws the balls for his dogs, we have a quality of life. I bought this place eight years ago, I didn't expect any of this shit, you guys don't live there, so don't point at us and tell us we don't have rights.
We buy a place on the water and you have to respect.
Guess what, I still expect common decency. You tell him not to point at me again or give me his attitude.
Why are you pointing at me for?
Because you pointed first and you don't live there.
I, I would like to make a point.
I don't wanna hear it, you don't live there, we do.
I would like to make a point, I have here the estimate for these docks. And these docks, for the estimate on April thirteenth, two thousand one, was for two eight by twenty floating docks and one eight by twenty-four floating docks. Now somehow or other, we have two eight by twenty docks plus the eight foot extension and somehow you were able to change the other one to a sixteen. Now I'm wondering if that could be done, why isn't that some of this other stuff couldn't be done? And why isn't that the original estimate you got back in two thousand eighteen, that point is approximately ten thousand dollars more?
Because of safety, the narrow docks are too rolling, floating docks are too rolling. I went through Wade Bacon who makes the docks and he suggested we go with the eight foot wide docks, that's what we went with. With the twelve foot long extensions for safety reasons, because when the water went down, that eight foot ramp is not gonna be so people, that was the reason why it was changed.
Well, when you're spending, you know, twenty dollars for every piece of lumber, your cost goes up substantially.
Bids were in before and the docks had been ordered before, did not have all the bells and whistles on it. These docks have all the bells and whistles, reflectors, tie down, they got bumper guards on it, that's why it costs.
Well, you have, boy, I mean, I, I mean, you only had one quote and boy, I'm back then had quotes for ninety-three hundred, eighty-two hundred and Falls Lumber had twenty-seven hundred and thirty-two hundred and the only quote we got this year was for almost fifteen thousand dollars. And the docks aren't even the same, they were changed, you, you chose to make a sixteen instead of a twenty-four.
Then that's not the main issue here, okay? And everybody has a question, but the dock in, in its past condition, we have three smaller, narrower, unoperable docks. They weren't usable, they were deteriorated, we removed them, we get installed and operated and got three new docks. Now, in the big picture, they're good looking docks, they're going to be used, they are being used. They, you know, obviously they're offended, they're, they're a little bit, but the idea, the idea here, if we improve the system, maybe not by their standard, the docks themselves have been improved and everything else, but if there is a possible chance that we can use that third dock somewhere else, because the idea was to get some more docking space and make that dock useful, which, which we have done, the dock is now usable and is very attractive. So with that said, I'd like to see if Nick and Nick, you can, you can, we had the idea for the location that one would, would be accessible, that would not allow, it still allows to use the side of that dock when the weather and the water conditions were correct, you know, I mean, it becomes, you have, you can use that dock on the south side. So with that said, I think we achieved what we wanted.
Mr. Mayor?
The dock, it is usable, but I think it, it, it is sort of, I mean, a big deal to see if we can find it. If Thursday's have to make up, obviously, we, we looked at this before, you know, docking space right here is not even a lot of water. And we think that I remember, you know, I understand where you're coming from, but I also remember at the same time that the problems, the city is going to lean forward just and it's how the citizens are driving down in. And we upgraded that dock right now, I know too, and so, and we upgraded the dock at City Beach, or Greater Beach. So it's something that continues, but if we can do that and find a spot that there is something that's accessible without a lot, we can look at other than that, I think we've done a great job, we've proved it, we're all happy with it, the dock was great. I believe that a lot of positive comments on that and, and that's great and they are useful now and I think that we use much more than we need. So with that said, I'd like to see if you thought of, you can recommend, we don't see if there is another spot and if we're on, if we have that rating or if there's a lot of third dock, we'll look to. So I want to make sure, we're not, we're not saying we're gonna move that dock, we're, we're looking to see if there's something that's acceptable because we have our time just finding some of the others, but that's.
I still don't understand why it can't be added temporarily to that Spruce Street dock. I don't understand why, I mean, over all the meetings I've ever come to, the biggest concern has always been that there's a lack of parking down on Spruce Street and until, or in such time, that you've spent three hundred dollars, nothing can be done.
Look at it, it's possible, either that location or another location, if it's possible, but I, you know, I, I know it's crap down there. There's, at Spruce Street, you put another dock, you're trying to get anybody by.
Nobody could extend, yeah, yeah.
And tariffs, I, I don't know those situations, I'm not going to comment on that, but Cheryl, if I'm not saying.
Okay, respectfully, I would just answer a call of you, I would ask people to have respect for us, not to point at us, not to shit or kiss us, you work for us, we don't work for you, we want respect, we have an opinion because we live right there, we're just asking for some compassion and every time I come in here, we have to do a John's theme because they're right here, I watch their grandchildren swim, I watch my children swim, I watch them come swimming. And you know what, I get to look and I get a point and I have every point in St. John's Zoo to ask for a decent quality of life and respect, respect for your citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So. Check, Nick, we see, if we can do that and.
Can that be placed?
All right, the next thing, we can go to work. Give me a second, make that motion to. Alternative place to that.
Could that, could that be placed on the agenda for next meeting, so there's some resolution on this?
We'll look, we, we should be able to find something, one or the other, by next week.
Thank you.
We're here for that, that's good to see, I don't work there, but we'll try.
Thank you, okay, thank you, thank you.
We can take a look and like I said, this is not, this is not a guarantee, if we're gonna move the dock, he's gotta take a look if someplace is feasible, but in the picture, we accomplish that, I understand it's not exactly what you want, but we accomplish what we wanted with that oxygen and who was following the recommendations that we gave, so with that said, I appreciate that the recommendation to look for an alternate spot. And the second, I. Now we're going on to the conceptual drawings of the second one. I have a question from, I requested conversations with SDA engine shop, SDA engineering. Do you know the whole charge and if there be any type of, full, entire, yeah, but being that we moved the equipment from the park, we're always paying attention to it, but the park is the old, and we could send him just our part of the, of the park, you know, they did designing parks for their area range, you know, over the little funding is with the site or the lead funding or things like that, and they can come back and submit the second ideas. What they do know is what's used in a shitty, you know, I guess, things come in and things, you know, popular that they, they disappear. So I think they may look after anything, I, I think maybe we should be doing that as a larger duty project. Send them some ideas, send them a book on it and that's it, the whole charge, and then suddenly we can improve the park and you can find money for it through the state, you know, whatever they get from, something is considered. It's just, I think that's the way I get them all.
Well, I mean, is there, are there big complaints or we have people being injured? I mean, I think we have, I think we have an equation there that works and as I stated last time we met and it was brought up is that we really believe in maintaining what we have and adding the things that the rec sees fit and I am just nervous about, you know, I, I lived down in the Twin Cities for five years, I've seen the parks that they built with a lot of nice things about them, but there's also a lot of things that just kind of feels kitschy, it kind of feels like manufactured. This is very much a, a natural space that works well with the environment and I'm just making that point that I think we need to be careful about changing something that.
Well, that's, again, I have great concerns because I think Zilber did a pretty good job of trying to keep windows ready and still progress, you know, forward and, you know, this is a reason, we gave interviews, you know, so.
Yeah, but we want, that's your thing, you live across the street from a park, you know.
Excuse me, we have a problem.
Well, you guys can, you guys are trying to can't handle that, you don't answer me.
Please, please, I, just ask, I just want to get your comment, we don't want to be talking about anybody else. Anyway, it was just conceptual drawing and with that can be some ideas of what's important to us, whether we maintain, you know, what like you said, you grew up there as a kid, those are your memories and grievances and everything else. They don't have to be a, I'm not talking to, you know, a walk-in park, you know, a circus relay or something like that. But if he holds what's important to us, it concerns us, then that's all brought in, conceptual drawings, then you have your designs.
I just wanna make sure again, the concern, how in, like in front while we're having this conversation because how we depart the work, because oh, we have crimes, we're implementing and then it's just something that maybe doesn't fall in line. I'm just being cautious.
Yeah, no, I, I agree a hundred percent, those are, those are smart ideas, if you basically start moving your, your logic and you tell them, you know, before, like, you have a painting house, you know, like golden colors, you look, bring the colors red to the, you know, bring some blue or colors on it, you get that, they have the idea and they start designing, but you, you also can fit in, you know, teach your daughters and students and that, you've talked more than I have, but I wanted to say something.
Just to clarify, are you talking about like a consultant or someone, because the rec hub has been asking for two years to try to find somebody that could come up here, take a look at our park and give us ideas, I don't want to interrupt, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, exactly.
Well, the rec hub is totally.
Yeah, I know what I've been doing, basically I want to prove us in the park and come through the rec hub and, and have a suit. I appreciate that person, they've told me that, this is, then now you have a project you look for, which, you know, you plan and, 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 you know, you have to, again, just, I don't know, the things you like, the things you don't like, and then you tweak it and. I don't know, the things you like, the things you don't like, and, and you tweak it, and, uh, something that you can build forward, and, 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 all right, Sharon?
My point here is this, the park is right across from our city council, okay? You take consideration how, how much of them, with you, with the equipment, I now submit everything to handle fairly, whether it's Frank's house, or his house, or my house, or their house.
And that's, and that's, and...
We need what's fair, you didn't let me finish, mayor, I don't have yet, you didn't let me finish my sentence. What I'm saying is what's fair to be fair for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, my turn. I think we've, I've heard so much about how Rainier is progressing so well. Well, one of the ways that they're way, 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 way behind is that there is no recycling being done by this city or by any of the businesses. And down at the park there, they need recycling, just like they need recycling by the docks, like they need recycling in many different places, including the regular muni, including this community buildings, and all that.
So, I did a little bit of research on this, because I'm really interested in, in trying to enact some form of biodegradable, like in the community, for total containers, for cups, that sort of thing. It gets more complicated because we phrase out what actually happens to recyclables after they leave the recyclable bin. They don't actually recycle, they actually get shipped foreign countries, full tanker garbage, and it's kind of a scheme.
They're shipped right up to France.
Yes, but I, I don't know exactly where their recycle streams end up, but I know, countrywide, you find out what's really disappointing, extremely disappointing to me. Also, to my note, that by the recycle, doesn't mean this will work down in six months, it means that you have to ship it to a special facility for it to provide the break, and so it's not something that goes back anywhere.
See, I would like to find the answer to, with friends, that's the...
Yeah, that would be...
Okay.
I see Nick, you have your answer.
We take, we recycle all their bottles and cans and cardboard, we take it twice a week, sometimes three, three times a week from the new...
But there's nothing ever outside. When they have rainy days, or when you have parties outside, there's no recycling cans out there. Everything's just thrown into the regular garbage.
So, basically, would it be possible that we could just purchase some of those, the bigger garbage cans, and cut the hole, and put cans all in, or bottles all in, or... And, yeah, so things that, that are...
That would be much better. Same thing out of the parks and everything.
Can you, yeah, Sharon?
I would just like to state on rainy days, we have yellow bins and black bins on rainy days. We have recycling bins and garbage bins that are parking on on rainy days. I take recycling very seriously, so. I just like to point out, when we do our part at the muni.
Got it. Good, I've never seen it.
The idea, we shifed this one of these little cans, and I really came up with a good one, which we usually have, but it's, but I, I, I'm not sure, can we should we shifing this, that's...
Well, one I, one I understand is friends' garbage, because I asked them from my business, is that friend don't garbage, that's what I can, my house, it's got the yellow can, the black can. They won't do the commercial yet, but they're working on it.
Okay.
So, but, that doesn't mean we put, or some other kind of can, it's a bag, like, recycle trash, or whatever. Yeah, friends, friends are moving forward, they have a commercial business, and...
There are also, I mean, if you want to spend taxpayer's money, there are also these things where you put the cans in, and they're automatically smushed down the bottom. I mean, I've seen that in my travels.
Or, or the company, even under the company handles, and urban divisions, and, uh, who's the company manager, they do these vehicles, but, I, I, it's probably, it's probably, it's industry, I'm sure, but that, I take my stuff to the transport station, plastic, and, and, all that stuff, and cardboard, or... Look into that, see, just exactly, I have no problem with that, I, I, I like that, it's, you go, you know, I, I do, in Ross, or, or, in, uh, but it's almost a logic, and they all have, as you said, they have the cans, cans that will be in trash, and that's a simple little gesture, easy to, uh, pretty easy to do, that are, that, that are pretty young cans, uh, pretty young trash cans, you see, that whole, it's a simple thing, trash, or, yeah, that's also, I remember that, not all plastic like this, they take, they don't take one and two, they don't take three, four, five, and, uh, those are, those are the heavier, heavier gauge plastic that, uh...
And not a, they need to go recycle, but then they're gonna throw garbage in recycle bins, and the recyclables in the garbage bin, and, 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 so there's still a lot of plastic thrown away.
Okay, as far as that goes, if you want to get a 30-gallon, or a 30-gallon trash can, like you said, that whole in, it counts only, and...
We have, well, for events to do that, we have certain, you know, cans, and most people follow it, you know, but I don't know if I would, if no other business is doing it right now, but when friends get to it, right now that we have working, with Nick running three times a week with all of ours, like, if you could go into the muni right now, you'll see on the side of the wall, we've got cardboard stacked, we've got all our bottles in the back, and we've got a, a big bin full of cans right now.
So, can I take some of the cardboard for my fire?
Absolutely, okay.
Where, where do you bring it?
Not supposed to bring cardboard. I'm opening it.
Yeah, I'm, um, I'm, I'm, uh, the dock. Did you hear any trash disposal at the dock, it opens on a daily full today, I'm facing all the very good problems, and, and, and...
As a big dock, you know, the, the big dock, you know, and then, uh, Rainier Beach, uh, some holes, later on.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, they're, uh, we got it here.
I, I, I guess that would be my scene, like you said, just, uh, you know, we didn't have the coffee can, like, that whole, and just take a can, and, and just, I don't know, you know, it's so, it's, I mean, separately, that, and you may have a whole, you know, can, to take the boy or something, or something like that, I don't know. Okay, anything else, then? Want to do here?
Want you to do here?
Over here, and then, oh.
Oh.
Um, I don't know, the city, because I look at them all the time. CN has been very active in the past two weeks, so I don't know if you're aware of that. They surveyed twice, and today, as I call it, the ex-military, the suits were here.
Looking at the park.
And, uh, Homeland Security was here, uh, some military people were here, and they're pointing and looking and going, and walking through our property. Excuse me, can I talk? Walking through my property, remember, you work for us. Anyway, walking through our property, I don't know how well the city is being informed of what they're gonna pull off, because they told, I've got guys I know that I can talk to, it's a double deal. So, are we aware of what they're gonna do?
Yes, we're, last meeting, they said they had their new X-ray machine, Tony Jackson's been there for almost 45 minutes, told us about it.
Which is why I have a question about the shoreline.
I, I, what they said was, we have to get a hold of CN and have them come represent, because...
Exactly.
Say it's what he knows from CN, which are building a new X-ray machine.
Yeah, that's, that, that's more than them.
That's all that I hear.
But do you remember my first report in the house, about my shoreline, with the...
Sure, I have some of the factors, Sharon. I think that's what most of the hair are probably...
But we do see them, but just like, they were out all of May.
And they're following a high-speed radar, radar tube, uh...
We're gonna need some, I don't wanna get...
Just, just to the, just to the west of the, to the west of, uh, the, probably, yeah.
And so that, and, and they said that that would be the next, definitely, um, survey, she called it. Now, I, I did request, Sharon, did you send that letter to Homeland Security?
Yeah, he sent, he sent some information about the, the radar or anything, and then I called her, I'll tell Council.
They, they, they can select it, it's in the paper, they can select it, one of, one of the forces going to get this 45 million, or 50 billion dollar radar machine. But it is a double deal that you have to hold it.
Yeah, I gotta ask, he, he...
They, they, that, that is the prime location that they would prefer, and if it was located, if it's in, like, they would locate, now, like, that, they go over somewhere by that corner of the trace, they would have, they have secured corridor for, 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 yeah, they have, they have, and that is an option, I mean, that is still an option, that, that...
That they have to close our city.
And, uh, you know, if they're talking either the wall or fence, or the site, that they draft all the way down, and, uh, obviously, it would be, which is, it is possible, that's what ended up happening, anyway, I think you, you, I would say, and, and so, they said, any further questions on some of this stuff, it's either for their, to see that, he should go to school, and their report, see them, and, and, uh...
Can you ask CN to come and, can you ask her a little story?
Coming in hours.
Oh, they're coming in hours.
Yeah, can we ask you, keep us informed on the little stuff, because when we see it, and they're, like, they were out at my property, they were looking at the pores, and they're out there, they feel a little nervous. You're like, what are they doing there? And we have rights to help, you know, these people.
Okay, if there is a question, you, Sharon, if you have...
I just wanted, uh, the, uh, CN is larger than four on the Canadian side there, a lot more than they, than they had before.
You don't get that?
Yeah, and I just wondered if there's any reason, uh, for that.
They don't have a quiet phone like we have.
Yeah, sure.
They don't have, because they came to ask, oh, we require, we require our clients, and we told them it was easy, but I, I feel, and, you know, I could have, uh, we could have heard a call to, to, uh, we are a call in Fort Frances, he's, that's an interest, he's great, he's a doctor, and he's, he's calling several times, so I would ask her to, uh, maybe she, 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 CN, because I know that...
But that's, that was your greatest victory in office.
What's that?
Your greatest victory in office is the quiet. Yes, indeed.
What's water for? All favor, I, oh.